Yeah, for that. Well, we see you now.
Yes.
There we go.
We had to reboot the whole computer.
Okay.
Any more questions for Ms. Simmons? Ms. Minor, please, of Trent Court.
A total of units. Occupied, I mean, the total units that she has is one ten, units occupied as well, five. Total vacancies is five, occupancy rate is ninety-five percent. You had four move-ins, three move-outs. And process three, six approved. Charge is thirty thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Receive is twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars, I mean, fifty-nine cents. Monthly unpaid, four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Tariff eighty-five percent, year-to-date, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Non-payments, you have fourteen, no criminal or other violations. Outstanding requests is four, request received is forty, completed thirty-six. Pending parts for. Pending repairs for, and pending part zero. Police report total is twenty-five and fire reports is zero.
I will, I have Mr. Jones.
The numbers, the numbers added up too.
I was gonna say.
The numbers added up. I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm good. I'm happy dancing my head.
Mr. Jones, on the pending repair and no, no parts pending, what's the status on those?
Well, those was actually, we needed somebody to recharge the air conditioning units, which he. They might fix them, but they're not totally fixed. So that's something that the vendor is working on. Okay, that's the only reason it's four left over.
Okay.
And he has to work as in his schedule as he can, so he has it fixed, but it's not totally broke down and rebuilt all the way back.
Okay, go ahead.
Have we, have we compared what it would cost to replace as opposed to?
Yes.
Okay.
To rebuild one, it's one forty-five hundred fifty, two hundred and. Actually put a new ones between ninety-five to thirteen thousand.
You do not want any.
It's not just part of the class, it's more.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I was just asking because didn't see pending reports.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's all. Ms. Huggins. For the Roth program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have fifty-five participants, non-participative, total occupancy a hundred and five. Case management, self-improvement awareness is continuous. Leadership Academy Phase One and Phase Two Developmental Classes. Community Ecology is continuous. Partnership Resource Opportunities and Work with Loneliness is continuous as well. Required Evidence Based Needs Aff竿 with Resident sixty-five and older, five. And they don't have any issues at all, difficult, long-term. I didn't wait for them on disability, there's social security. There's eleven personal care aides, there's three health and wellness. As pregnant, the county department. Health Department, nursing clinic. Brilliant Health Resources, great place to start behavioral, credit county senior citizens. Child care is at Bay Thirty-Eight, the Central Residence. Creative Community, still have the scholarship enrollment program. Activities for the community, we have an event scheduled for May twelfth. And then we'll judge the Earth Day project contest. There's free after-school programs at the Life Learning Center. Swimming lessons, New Bern Aquatic Center, registration was March seventeenth. So that I don't know if the, someone said that the list, registration was closed. So I'm not real sure about that, I'm still trying to find out. So New Bern Housing Authority is sponsoring eight households for free swimming lessons. Transportation is at current parks and on the schedule. Homeownership classes Habitat for Humanity is, we're still ongoing. We're still. Working with residents that may need assistance with home ownership. I actually had a contact today that I was talking with someone that I'm gonna meet with Wednesday of this week and. He is Mike Williams, and so he used to be the director of Habitat. So we're gonna go over some things and see if we can have the residents that offer ready and paying for it. And. Youth jobs, I've got aquatic center, seasonal faculty assistance, which that starts May twenty-seventh through September fourth. And New Bern Recreation where youth job. The same position and the same date and time, the ages are fifteen through eighteen and also available older adults.
When you, when you say you got youth jobs, what, what is that? Help me with that.
Well, that's just jobs that they have open currently for youth that starts at age fifteen.
Like for the summer or summer program?
Yes, I can, I want to ask you about the childcare and the waiting that thirty, I think that's so important for so many of the residents here. Does this mean that thirty families currently have childcare and there's nobody waiting? Is that what that is or?
It's, it's two things. From what I've been told, the work first program only offers. Their benefits to specific families where they have to have. A total of thirty-five hours that they need to make in order to stay in that program through the government where they get. Access to funds, but they have to do a job search, you know, in order to fulfill whatever benefits that they give them. So if they. Per se are not able to be in that program for whatever the reason is, you know, they may not meet their criteria. Then they're gonna have to figure out another way in order to. Have those childcare services and things like that, so it kinda is up and down if they can't get approved for that program. So the other thing is with no waiting, they can actually go in and actually apply for childcare services. Once they apply for those services, you know, they can go in and go ahead and put their child in the day, you know. Start the process and hopefully they will be able to place their child.
I know that so many people are restricted for getting jobs. And I've talked to some people because of needs of childcare, so I just want to be able to point them in the right direction if.
Right.
This is the case. It's probably really important, get people back into the workforce.
One other question, the home ownership classes, are they ongoing? Cause I've noticed February. They being there and have there been any since then or are they all gonna be?
I left that there because it was, they just had one. And normally what they do is, is like every six months. If they can get approval to have it sooner, they will. But they normally just stick to just every six months and they. They can find a place to hold those meetings, they'll, you know, send out a notice.
So it won't always be a refreshing lives.
No, I just, because that's.
It was just always there, it's always like. I was thinking.
We got a good working relationship with them and they know that they can't get somebody else, we.
You'll take it.
Call us and we'll show up, you know.
Yeah, I decided to leave it there because that's the way we want it. So if he's willing to allow them. Right next.
Any more questions for her? I've got a couple comments from this. Just want to commend you because when you started this, you were kind of, kind of. Yeah, you, but, but we seeing the proof of your, of your labor and. And you're serious about what you're doing and we appreciate that and we, we know that our citizens need. Need somebody to assist them and to keep knocking on the doors and not, you know, not knocking one time and giving up or keep going back. That's knowing your audience and your target group that you're being consistent with, with it because. We, a lot of time we don't have the tools. We, we don't have the tools and we need somebody to help us get the tools. Sometimes we don't know what's available to us. And thank you for getting out there and doing what you're doing, the program's in place and you're maximizing it. We just want to commend you on that because I remember you used to come in here just ear down and briefing and. You know, now you're up and you, you know, appreciate you, thank you for that. Let's ask you.
Yes, sir.
Executive Director Report.
So tonight I was going to allow Laurel Street to give you all the update. On what we plan to do as far as our partnership with them and then also just to talk. About the MOA, we had some questions that came to us and we wanted to be able to, to give you all. Full information on that while we work to finalize that. That is a document in draft and so we, we've had some points. That we'd like to, to bring to Laurel Street to discuss and then also from the feedback that we received from commissioners. We wanted to bring that to Laurel Street as well so that we can. Negotiate that agreement and come up with a draft to share with. You all and I know you all wanted some information on Laurel Street and. Laurel Street did go through our process of selecting a code developer for our Trent Court project. And they were the top group and they were selected by the agency. And so we would like to give them an opportunity to share what they presented to us with the full board tonight. And I know I saw Ms. Germany and Mr. Cochran on, I don't, did Ms. Germany fall off? Can't really see every, oh no, she's there. Because I'm on, I'm on Zoom as well and I know I saw you and I didn't see you, so I'll see you there. So we're gonna allow you the opportunity to speak to the board tonight and present to them.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. To introduce Lee Cochran, who is our Senior VP. He's on as well and we're going to pull up the presentation for you all.
So Tiffany, I think someone needs to allow me to share my screen if that would be possible.
Okay.
But, but it's very nice to meet you all. Like I said, I'm, I'm Lee Cochran, Senior Vice President for Development.
Select, I'm, I'm sorry, you go ahead and I'll, I'll see if you would select your screen and allow him to be able to do that.
In the corner of his screen.
Corner of his screen.
Mm-hmm, there's three dots.
Not true.
Or you see down at the bottom where it says share screen in the big green? Click on that and then it'll say allow other participants to be able to share, you see it?
Here at a time or multiple participants.
There you go.
Just do multiple, multiple, that's fine. Okay, I'm sorry, Lee.
No, that's perfect, I appreciate it. Hopefully this will work. So are you seeing a presentation on your screen?
Yes.
Awesome, fantastic. Like I said, my name's Lee Cochran, Senior Vice President for Development for Laurel Street. I've been with Laurel Street for almost ten years and I'm thrilled to be working with the New Bern Housing Authority on, on this redevelopment. So we're, we're really excited about it. I will not, I will be brief, I'll try to go quickly so you, but I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. I'll lead us through and there's a couple of times when I'll ask Tisha Germany, who's gonna be the project lead on this, on this redevelopment to kinda chime in as well? So without further ado, just to give you an overview, Laurel Street, we're, we're North Carolina based, we're based here in Charlotte, North Carolina. We develop high-quality mixed-income communities for both families and seniors, affordable to a variety of incomes. We are head, as I said, headquartered in North Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina, but you can see from the, from the map that. We've developed as far north as Richmond, Virginia and as far south as, as Atlanta. As you can see, we, we have done a development in Indigo Ridge in New Bern. And are thrilled to be coming back to do some things, some additional development in New Bern. A lot of our developments are along the I-85 corridor, as you can see, Charlotte, Raleigh Durham, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Salisbury, Belmont, North Carolina. Along that corridor, there are, we are launched in 2011, Dion Nelson is our owner and CEO. She launched Laurel Street in 2011, so it's our twelfth year of operations, there are twenty-two of us. And growing, so a combination of development folks, construction folks and all the normal accounting and asset management folks as well. We, we do, we are known for our partnership approach, most of our developments involve a partner of some, some kind. That includes housing authorities, municipalities, community development corporations, faith-based institutions. I think we're on our fourth development that has a church as a partner, we've become kinda known for those developments. But honestly, we got our start with Housing Authority partnerships that I'm gonna spend a minute on here in a minute. We are a certified minority-owned and woman-owned business. And just getting specific to this Trent Court redevelopment, it was something we presented. The team we put together, are some of the members are shown here, obviously Laurel Street is the development partner. The, the architecture and design firm that we selected is Neighboring Concepts, they're the largest minority-owned architecture firm in North Carolina. Harmon Construction, they oversee all of our construction management, they're an African-American owned company. And then our marketing consultant is Yellow Duck, a woman-owned business. And Arnold Golden is are gonna be our attorney, they're the lead for our development, is a woman as well. So diversity is kind of core to who we are and core to what we believe in, so it kind of permeates every part of our, of our, of what we do. Not just construction, but also kind of all, all, all forms of development. To give you a little bit of experience, of our experience, we serve folks, our housing serves folks from as low as thirty percent AMI all the way up to market. We're fairly unique in that situation in that we serve kind of all incomes. And that includes what's really unique about them is we have all kinds of financing structures. Including kind of standard low-income housing tax credit developments that have HUD 221D4. Benny Freddie four percent, nine percent tax credits. But also we do what we call workforce housing and market rate housing that are not funded with tax credits. They're still mixed income, but they use private equity and other debt products that are interested in investing in, in mixed income housing. So that we can kind of serve a broader range of incomes all the way up to kind of market rate housing. We do, as I said before, have experience with Housing Authority partnerships. We've done, and we'll show you a slide next to show the number, we've done many multi-phase public housing redevelopments in North Carolina specifically. We've done some outside of North Carolina, but most of them within North Carolina. And through those partnerships, we've, I think, worked with most HUD programs, we've done RAD, Choice Neighborhoods, HOPE-6, Section 18 have, have been involved in our developments. And we do have experiences, was something that was important, I know in the RFQ submission, experience with green building practices, we've used LEED, we've used EarthCraft. Energy Star, the National Green Building Standard, kind of we fit the, the standard that works best for the development that and the goals that we're trying to accomplish. Here are some examples of the multi-phase public housing redevelopments. So every one of these was a partnership with a, with a, of a housing authority to redevelop a public housing community using multiple phases. Three of them in North Carolina, you see there Park Terrace was with the High Point Housing Authority, that was a three-phase redevelopment. Renaissance in Charlotte with the Charlotte Housing Authority now called Oliviaan, that was a three-phase, but also included a school and a, and a. A childcare center. Brenner Crossing was with the Salisbury Housing Authority, a two-phase public housing redevelopment using RAD. And then Highland Grove in Richmond was a two-phase public housing redevelopment. Renaissance was a HOPE-6, used the HOPE-6 program, as I said Brenner Crossing was RAD. And then Park Terrace and Highland Grove, more to some traditional public housing dollars, but still mixed income redevelopments. I'm gonna let Tisha spend a minute talking about our latest multi-phase redevelopment, this is in Durham, this is with the Durham Housing Authority. That just was awarded recently, Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant. And I'm just gonna let Tisha talk, and so she's leading this project as well, so I'll take her a minute to describe this one.
Sure, thank you. So this is in close to downtown Durham. And our partnership with the Durham Housing Authority and also with the city of Durham with their neighborhood partnership. We are redeveloping their former East Main Liberty Street Public Housing Community. That consists of both a high-rise as well as some low-rise multifamily buildings. And fortunately, we're excited, we closed on the first phase of this site, it's kind of the pre-CNI phase. And in the picture there, that is the portion that is labeled with the one. And that is two buildings and we're calling that the Elizabeth Street site there. And we're excited, we just closed a, a week ago and are starting construction on that site on seventy-two units there. And then we're following up with the first phase of the CNI. We're excited because this CNI grant will allow us to subsidize the remaining affordable housing portion. It's a forty million dollar grant, the Housing Authority received twenty-two million dollars of it will go towards the housing portion. And this summer we'll be closing on the first phase of this CNI grant, the second phase of the site. And that will be buildings two and three, which is a combination of a senior building, which is the three you see on the site there. And the two is an eighty-four unit family community. So we're excited about that and additionally, we'll be building some more family units, all tax credit affordable housing. Those are the buildings that you see labeled four. And part of that phases will be separated by multiple phases to go through, about a hundred and forty-six units, just with the units labeled with the fours. As well as a community building that's kind of at the top of this. Drawing there at the head above the park. So we'll be building a community building there and also a community public space down at the bottom for the entire site. And finally, we'll be capping off this CNI development with the building that's labeled five. And that will be a workforce housing building of about a hundred and sixty-five units, multifamily with some commercial on the first floor. And we'll have a structured parking behind it. So this is a multi-year project that we'll be working on for the next five or six years. And as you can see from the label there on the, this slide, it'll total about five hundred and fifty-five total units once we're complete.
So there were a couple other things that I think were important when we were responding with the RFP that we just wanted to highlight real quickly is. We do have experience with several developments that are in floodplains or impacted by floodplains, including our Indigo Ridge development in New Bern. But also our Laurel Square in Rome, South Meadows also in Rome, so Rome has a lot of floodplain that we've dealt with. And then Marrero Commons is not a Laurel Street, but that was something that Tisha worked on in New Orleans that I'll, you know, describe briefly.
Sure, this was a project that was part of the big four public housing communities that we, that I worked on right after Hurricane Katrina. When a lot of folks were displaced and the, the homes, they were just uninhabitable. And so we built a four hundred units of replacement housing there on the site.
And then finally, I won't read all of this by any means, I just wanted to show the breadth that we have of green building experiences using the five different. Green building certifications and all the different developments that we did using those. So like I said, we tend to look for the certification that we think accomplishes the goals of our partner the, the best and then we have experience working with those. And then I think last, second to last, we, we wanted to talk a little bit about what we, what we think makes this unique. Well, obviously we have tons of experience in affordable and workforce housing, we've built more four percent tax credits. New construction than any developer in North Carolina over the last ten years. But we pair that with this equity and debt sources that we've developed to build market rate housing, but that's integrated into a mixed income building. So this I'll let Tisha briefly describe, this is Barrick on Seventh, this is in downtown Charlotte. And it'll have some of the highest rents of anything we've built to date because it is in downtown Charlotte, taking advantage of that. So we're getting, we cap out and our three bedroom unit is in the mid two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollar range. So it's, but it's also paired with units from eighty to sixty and thirty percent AMI, so Tisha, just a brief kind of description of that more.
Yeah, it's eighty unit development or partnering with the local church there, Little Rock. And so this was land that they had that we're partnering with them on this development, it's about a twenty-three billion dollar multifamily housing development. We plan to be finished by the end of this year, it's progressing really well. It only has eighty units, but we have about three hundred and fifty people that have put their names in the hat as, so to speak, in the interest list. So it's going to be a high demand building and we're excited to see it complete by the end of the year.
And I know construction costs have risen, but I think Tisha meant to say twenty-three million, not.
I'm sorry, not yes. Yes.
And then finally, and I know this is the last, we selected neighboring concept for a reason, so neighboring concepts, we've worked with them on affordable housing, tax credit housing, market rate housing. But in addition to being an architect, they also are a land, landscape architects and, and they do public park planning. So this is an example, this is a public park in downtown Charlotte, Romer, Givern Garden that they designed. We know that public space is a huge part of the Trent Court redevelopment, you know, space that, you know, that residents of Trent Court can use, but that fellow can use as well. So we wanted to just show you a quick example of a, of a, of this public park that they designed in downtown. Just there was a real reason we wanted them to be part of this team. So with that, I am gonna stop talking, I hope I haven't gone on too long. That's kind of the end of just what, this is what we presented to the, when we were in the interview process, we wanted to see you, but we're happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
A quick question. For you, have you done any work in historic districts and had to deal with historic commissions, historical preservation commissions?
Yes, our down, not the development that Tisha showed, but we have some other development in downtown Durham. That is in a historic district, it was new construction, but we had to get approval from the historic commission based on being built next to and respecting the setbacks of the. Of the, of the historic district there, that's our primary, I'm trying to think if we have another doing this off the top of my head, but that's the one that's active right now.
Does that really impact your costs though? Because really you have to. Go the extra mile you would in this project because you are in a historic district next to a historic district. And so I'm just curious if that would impact the cost of what you're doing, probably more so than what you, I've seen built, some of the examples.
In that case, it did to the degree that we ended up having, because of the setbacks with a setback, in order to get the units that, that this was Durham County was trying to get, we had to go to a five-story building. So from that perspective, it wasn't that we had to use different materials. It was more of a question of setback, which led, led to a building that was a little more expensive from a. Just because of the design was not as efficient as maybe we would have without that. In essence, we're, what I think we're good at is listening and understanding requirements and then accounting for those requirements.
And New Bern's interesting, you know, we have high restrictions. And New Bern's interesting. You know, we have high restrictions here. We've got all of the above. So want to make sure you, and we're happy to help you navigate that, but, um, that is, that is an issue.
Yes, we definitely heard that, so.
I don't know, um. I, I had questions with the, with the agreement. And I don't know if this is the place or is this just questions on their presentation or how are we, how are we going to handle that? I had sent the list of questions, so I don't, I don't know. I had sent them to, um, to Tiffany and I, the attorneys, you know.
I believe Laurel Street received a copy of your questions.
Okay.
Uh, if y'all want to talk about the agreement with Laurel Street. Uh, and this is perfectly appropriate time to do that. It may not be good answers to all your questions, but it'll give us an idea of where, where you want us to focus on going negotiations or drafting.
I don't know if anybody else has gone through it or, or has questions, um. Um, you know, one of my questions was this gives total control to Laurel Street for all development property owned by New Bern Housing Authority, not just Trent Court. And basically, that's what I picked up in here. Is that, is that correct?
I can, I'm happy to take it. There were a couple of questions I thought we could probably clarify and then if there's.
Maybe that might be easier.
Yeah, want to make a couple of clarifying statements, um, and I'll start with that one. So I, if, if that was how it read, it was certainly not the intent. So I think we referenced some off-site parcels. So I think what we were intending was that we would be the preferred, the development partner for the redevelopment, the Trent Court property. In order to redevelop Trent Court, we do think it's going to require some development of some off-site of mixed income housing that, um, so that will allow for relocation. When we mentioned off-site development, what we were referencing was either parcels that we could identify on our own. Or if there were city-owned parcels that they had, they would offer as possible redevelopment, not necessarily to to then take control of any other New Bern Housing Authority properties. We are more referencing other development parcels within the community.
And would that possibly then lead to maybe a partnership with the, uh, New Bern Redevelopment Commission? Because they would currently own the city-owned property in the, in that area, in the CNI area.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, absolutely. And I think we would obviously hope for your support as we kind of come up with a plan that we can, we can all agree on. We'd hope your support in, in, in helping negotiate with that body to see if there's a but, but, but that would all be, all we'd asking for from, from the housing.
And that could be included in this agreement, that specific language and partnering with them?
Yeah, we'd definitely be open to that. The other clarification I wanted to make that I do think, uh, certainly could have been taken either way, and I want to make sure it's clear. When we used a general term in the, um, MOU, um, a transfer of a development parcel. So we, and we used that intentionally because we, we meant it kind of broadly. That certainly would mean, could mean a long-term ground lease. It could mean a, a sale of the property, but we wanted to be broad enough, but that would have to be agreed upon between New Bern Housing Authority and Laurel Street, whether land was going to be outright sold. Um, or it was be a long-term ground lease. We've done tons of long-term ground leases. That is mostly how these redevelopment projects happen. We're completely open to that. We just wanted, we, in the MOU, we tried to use a term that kind of encompassed all, all, all different ways that land could be conveyed. Um, we can even, you can, you can sell land and take a loan back. There's a lot of different ways and we just wanted to it was really meant to be broad, but any specific how the parcels would be transferred would be, have to be negotiated for each individual transaction.
Um, the, this MOA, it speaks to RAD financing. Does this mean that this will be a RAD project like Craven Terrace? Are you aware of the Craven Terrace project?
We are, we are, because I think that was going on around the same time we were building Indigo Ridge. So it would be different in the sense that, so RAD financing. We, we were contemplating using RAD financing. RAD financing can be used for both re, um, rehab or new construction. In this case, we were anticipating that the RAD financing would be used as a financing source for new construction. So you could use RAD for that. So in this case, the units at, create the, the units that have not been flooded yet, the units that are still occupied. We would anticipate we'd go through what's called RAD conversion. Where the finance, where essentially the, the subsidy would be you, be transferred to new units. Either off-site or on-site in Trent Court, but so using RAD financing, but it would look very different than Craven Terrace because it would be new construction, not rehab.
And let me, let me just, let me just clarify one, one thing related to what Lee just indicated. Uh, in, in this case, it, the units will not remain as public housing. The units will convert to a section eight project-based voucher assistance. So as, as Lee is indicating, the subsidy from an operating subsidy standpoint will go away and then the vouchers will be operated through Twin Rivers.
Reggie, thank you for that clarification. So the existing units that will be here that are not going to be torn down. They will convert to section eight and then do we have to get certain approvals on that like we had to on the flooded out units? To give Twin Rivers the ability to issue those, those vouchers?
We, we, we would. And, and so that discussion is already in place from that perspective. Uh, even to the point where the vouchers that you all received for the flooded units. Not all of those, not all of those vouchers were utilized.
Right.
And so we've already talked to Cynthia about bringing those vouchers. I think it's about sixty. And so we've already discussed, uh, Tiffany and, and has had that conversation previous about bringing those sixty vouchers back to this site that were unused by the tenants that were dislocated, uh, under the flood.
Okay, so there would, so the idea is that that area of Trent Court would not be redeveloped in the sense of new buildings. You're not, you know, I assume their plan was going to look at a total look of the Trent Court footprint for.
Oh, no. No, 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 we're, we're, we're looking, it's, it's just in a phased process. As you all know, because of the, because of the FEMA requirements, phase one is the flood damage units. And then phase two are the remaining occupied units. But to answer your question is the goal is for the entire development to be completely demolished and one hundred percent new units being built back, uh, on that property.
Okay. Sorry to ask so many questions.
So, so the, all the, all the units will be demolished?
Yes, sir. All the units will be demolished at some point.
And where does that fit in on environmental assessment? But, I mean, we ran into this with, um, there was a lot of concern. I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of history to Trent Court and those units that are not in danger of flooding. That's all been taken into consideration?
Absolutely. Everything has been taken into consideration. And we've even had discussion with the HBC. Uh, when we first, uh, when Tiffany first came, and that's where that whole issue of keeping one building uh, on the property, uh, from a historical perspective. So that's where that discussion, uh, uh, came, came about and that we're working through. Yes, sir.
Is that the Charles, uh, Taylor Office Building that you're referring to or one?
No, sir. One, one of the residential, they, they wanted one of the residential buildings to be kept and again, that's still shaded, but that was, is to keep one of those residential buildings. What we're proposing, if one has to be kept, is one that is in the floodplain area opposed to in the higher ground. Cause there's really no value in keeping one of those residential units that's not going to be occupied with anything, uh, in the higher ground. So you know, if anything, from a historical perspective, we were proposing to keep one down, uh, closer to the river. But again, that, and, and we had that discussion with HBC before. Our desire was to have all of the units demolished, but if you had to keep one, that's where we would propose to keep one of the units.
Well, I mean, how would that fit into an environmental assessment for what we've run into? From a city perspective, um, when you've got units, I'm, I'm open-minded to this discussion and your, your, your ideas on it. Um, I know that there will be quite a few New Bernians concerned about the, the units that I, I know you probably run into this more from ADA compliance and things like that. Is that what that's all about?
Yeah, we're, 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 yeah, we're fine on, on everything, uh, and, and, and excuse me still for saying Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, but, but we're, we're, we're still we, we, we've worked through those things, uh, you know, from that perspective, uh, already. Like I said, from an environmental standpoint, there's really not a requirement. That's more of the shipo in the MOA of working with the community. If the community is not going to require one of those buildings to be kept, uh, all of those buildings, you know, really can be demolished. It was the community perspective from HBC that was wanting to keep one of those as part of the, uh, the MOA agreement.
Okay.
Um, Lee, going back to, um, another question I had, the development fees and the asset management fees. Is this a standard financial split or is it something that we can negotiate for this MOA? You know, I saw your split in there, but I was unsure how that laid out amongst other deals.
So it is definitely negotiable. So it's not some prescribed by, you know, some agency says it has to be split that way. What we proposed is consistent with the different redevelopments we've done with housing authorities. And, and a lot of it has to do with the, the different roles and responsibilities. Um, so we think it's consistent with what we've done, uh, but it definitely isn't.
What, the MOA speaks to meeting financial targets. What, what are the, what are these target numbers?
That honestly was written in order is, is, is to meet whatever targets you would have as a board. So I think what we as a, as a development partner specializes in is, is listening to, to our partner as to what are their goals. So you can do a redevelopment in two very different ways. And the more, you know, the, to be frank, the more affordability that you do, the less, um, economics there are. And so we want to hear from you over time as we do this initial plan. What are the goals of the housing authority? Kind of how many replacement units do you want to have? What different income levels do you want to serve? But also are you trying to make, you know, are you trying to get brucies from a land sale or are you not trying to do that? So it's, that was really to say, we will work with you depending on what your targets are, what you're trying to accomplish financially. So you have a lot of goals, but one of your goals is likely to be what is the, where do you want to be when all this, this thing is done financially? And so that was a nod to that.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Um, I might just ask counsel, the main difference between an MOA and an MOU, understanding versus an agreement?
Yeah, that's.
It's an MOA, right?
Sure, um, Mr. Allo. Uh, Lee, hey, it's Jamie Norman, uh, Board Attorney. The question is, what is the MOA? Is it an agreement? I think it would be helpful for us to hear from you, Lee, and I'll provide some legal context if you want to, but tell us a little bit about this agreement, what you see in this agreement being binding on both parties. And whether or not, and I, I know the answer to the question, but, but just to lay it out. Whether or not this MOA is really a part of a series of agreements of being undertaken over time. And at each stage, what do you anticipate being the housing authority's ability to say yes, no, maybe negotiate with you? Lay that out for us sort of in the big picture and then we can drill down if we need to.
Yeah, I'll do my best. Um, and, and if the difference between an MOA and an MOU is, is, is I, if there is a difference, I don't know what it is. So in our, in my mind, I may accidentally say. I know, I think our attorney called it MOA, but the way I conceive of it is an MOU is really kind of a putting terms on, on paper. Uh, it tended, it is not intended to be binding, legally binding. It's really intended to make sure that before we write a thirty-page development agreement, we kind of, let's get the important stuff and make sure we're on the same page. So it's really an opportunity to make sure that we're in agreement on the basic structure of the relationship. Once we've agreed and signed an MO, uh, MOU or an MOA, we would then move to a, um, usually MDA, a master development agreement. That's going to be much longer, have a lot more legal terms in it. And that one becomes legally binding. So that one's got a lot more to it, but it's, it's hard to go straight to the MDA because you really want to get at what are the business terms first and then move to the more kind of dense agreement of an MDA.
Well, that's very helpful because there was some confusion on our end by the title, MOA. To my mind, that, that indicated something different. And I was looking for where the, the development agreement comes into play. Um, you, the, the, based on what you just said, I would like the chance to recharacterize this as sort of a term sheet. There may be some binding preliminary provisions. We'll make it much more clear as to what the next steps are with the development agreement that will be coming, that kind of thing. Uh, that would be very helpful. So that's good. That, that is, that is very helpful to know. And I think that answers your question. Um, Mr. Allo about the, what is this, what is this creature? And I think the answer is, it is whatever we need it to be. I think we can restructure in such a way that it's more accurate in terms of it not being a binding final agreement. Cause it's not, it's really not. It's really the first of what I think will be a series of agreements, but the ma- what they call the master developer agreement, the master development agreement will come next. That's and that'll, that will take a little bit more time, but like Lee said, it's, it's often a much better idea to get the general gist of it down first. And it makes it much more efficient later to get the final product done.
Well, we are, you know, looking forward to your master development agreement, um. And what's been going on in New Bern for quite some time is where the housing authority, if it were like in Wilmington and was robust and aggressive. Um, and suiting the needs of a populace like ours with the right magic number of units. Um, the invisible hand of the Adam Smith market has done that for us by way of net, uh, nine percent tax credits. So I don't know if any of us in, in the room know exactly the number of units that we as a, uh, city-owned hill should have, um, to do our part for, for housing for, for New Bern. So having said that, the way the market, the, the private sector has functioned in New Bern to compensate for what this so many things like the Twin Rivers financing, section eight versus other cities that have that incorporated into their housing authority, et cetera. Um, the big question is that while I think this, this is very, uh, I, I like what, what we're doing here and talking about and where we're going with it. If a um, a different mousetrap came up, a new version of something, would we be uh, totally locked into this development agreement where a ABC developer wanted to geographically come into an area where you guys are pretty much primarily functioning? Would that, would that preclude other potential smaller unit developments from taking place? That's the question.
You mean in partnership with the housing authority?
Um, would, would a, another, somebody that really knew how to bring, let's say nine percent tax cuts to New Bern and where we typically, you know, for several years, we only got one every one to three years. And so now it seems like we have we have quite a few now, which is good. But that's compensated for what the housing authority hasn't done in the past. So I'm just trying to look ahead. Is, um, as we develop, and I'm sure we'll have more questions. Um, are you looking for a certain geographic area of New Bern like CNI itself? And would you be looking as we continue this relationship to preclude other potential Laurel Streets from being, making investments in a given area?
Sure, I think I can address. I think the goal of this development, the MDA and all that would be to say that we are in partnership for redevelopment of just the Trent Court site.
Okay.
We do, we do would like, we do think that there needs to be probably one phase of off-site development because we need a relocation to have, that will make the development go faster. But nothing, nothing is precluding another affordable housing developer buying a piece of land somewhere in New Bern and doing a nine percent tax credit or a four percent tax credit.
Okay.
Yeah, but, so yeah, it's really, it's really focused on Trent.
What would be the, what size would that off-site development be? Would that be a one, one acre parcel or twelve acre parcel? Twelve acre parcel or would it be eighty units or five hundred units? Would it be vertical a hundred feet? What what are you?
I I think it's probably pretty mature to, I I think we probably draw some bounds on it. I don't want to.
Right.
Before the horse, because I think it's something we planned together.
Right.
I would say it's something, you know, it's something around a hundred units, but. Just so you, we've done a hundred units on two acres and we've done a hundred units on fifteen acres. Not to say we would do either of those here, but I think it's really about. What parcel is identified and what makes sense for that parcel from a planning, from a scale perspective. It could be, it can be, it could be senior, it could be family. It's kind of around also around what is the needs of folks that are going to be relocated to that community. So I think it's something we work on together.
Done.
Thank you.
Thank you. And go with your questions.
Yeah, as far as that that goes, I I was wondering too, if Tiffany could just briefly give us an update on. Where we're at with the FEMA people, her consultant, because is that, um Ms. Askew, could you briefly give us an update on where you're at with the FEMA consultant? I know the last meeting you said you were going to be meeting with them again and where are we at in that process?
Um, right now, we're just waiting on them to review all of the documents that we submitted to them. Uh we're kind of still in the standstill like we were before, um just waiting on them to get back um to us. And we do have weekly, um bi-weekly meetings uh with myself, the FEMA consultant that we've hired. And um the people from the FEMA office. And then sometimes we um include HUD in that as well. Um the last meeting we had with them, we were trying to determine who would be. Um acting as the lead for the project and um, you know, it was decided, I thought that it was going to be FEMA. But from the call that we had this past Thursday, it may go back to HUD, but um they're kind of like back and forth, back and forth. Um and not really giving us the full information that we need so that we could proceed.
And Ms. Askew, would it not be in the best interest of affordable housing in New Bern that we expeditiously. Uh if we so chose to do the Laurel Street deal at the center, we do that. Isn't that going to play into the final approval of the demolition? That if they're playing?
Yes, yes. Um a lot of the things that they're they're waiting on um is just deciding on. Um you know, who's going to be the lead in this process and also just reviewing, I mean, if you can. You know, find someone that could get FEMA to move, I mean, I'd be happy if you attend um the next meeting that we have with them. I could send you an invite so that you can, you know, be a part of that discussion with us.
I would, I would say the time is of the essence to work out a deal with the Laurel Street Group or a group. Like Laurel Street Group if it, if, you know, it's time is of the essence to move forward with something like this.
It is.
So.
I mean, I'd be happy to, I'll send you the invite for the next uh FEMA call and um just as Commissioner. Um Huff was in on it, I will be happy to have you in it so that you can, you know, hear um what I hear.
Is that the reason we hired the consultant so that they can avoid the interference for us? Are they not?
Oh, they're, they're doing, they're doing, uh she's doing a great.
Yeah, she's excellent.
Yeah, she's doing a great job. It's just, you're trying to get two organizations that don't speak the same language to. Uh to run through a translator and it's uh a a slow pro- uh process. But uh maybe Commissioner Outlaw has some magic everyone else has.
Need to get Bobby Astor in there. He's the, he's the king when it comes to FEMA stuff now. Again, you got HUD in there and that's probably the issue.
Yes.
That's the issue.
Any, any more questions uh come in, so Mr. Norman, for us?
Well, I'll, I'll just say to to Lee, thank you for the MOA or we'll revise it.
Okay.
We'll cover things that were not covered in this meeting that are more legal or technical. And then we'll, we'll get it all back in good order, I think, for everybody.
Hopefully, the next month or do we need to have a special session?
Whatever we need to do, um we'll work with it.
Just one, I'm sorry, I don't mean to prolong it. Were, were you asking that the redevelopment commission? Be specifically named i- in the agreement?
Well, or maybe as a potential partner. Um and the reason I'm saying that is because they have the property, they're saying the city of New Bern. But the city has now transferred property into the name of the redevelopment commission. So they own that property, so really they would be the contact if they're going to be looking at property within the CNI. If there's parcels or whatever that has been transferred, that's the only reason I said that.
Approved each and every sale after redevelopment.
I mean, no, it depends if, you know, at the end of the day, they do, but they still, the deal is made with. The redevelopment commission and the purchase would be from the redevelopment commission, not from the city of New Bern.
Right, but even if. I I we don't have to get into it here, but even if the commission approves it, but the Board of Aldermen doesn't, then it doesn't go anywhere. We've seen that happen a couple times. Uh and and at the end of the day, Foster still supervises uh Catricia, uh so. Uh I mean, to me, the the wording makes sense and it doesn't. It 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 doesn't mean we have to come back to the table if something were to happen to the redevelopment commission, frankly.
I think the obligation will be on Laurel Street, it'll be whatever it is they need to do with whomever it is, City Development Commission.
So make sure, because again, that's a, you know, you want to bring all the parties.
And well, and then that's appropriate for the term, that's appropriate for the term sheet, so the Laurel Street is on notice. That they have these different organizations that they need to work with, which I'm sure they know that already, but we'll, we can, we can make it work.
Okay.
Any more questions, concerns? First of all, I want to thank you all for uh the presentation.
Absolutely.
Very informative, very enlightening. Uh looking forward to moving forward with what we have to do to expedite, you know, get things moving. Ms. Askew, thank you very much for pulling all this together. Uh though it's not easy, uh you're on travel, uh things of that nature. But thank you, uh Laurel Street for your time today. Amelia, you've been excellent. Thank you for all the insight, the wisdom. Um we're looking for a workshop, we're getting that lined up so we can get get that taken care of. So all of us can be talking the same language, at least got an understanding of what's going on. Um if there are no much further question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, yes.
Uh so as an email that I sent out, I was bringing to attention that um.
Yes, yes.
So I personally, so that way, I wanted to open up a line of communication for residents to be able to speak with me. As me being resident commissioner. So with that, I've got a separate phone from my personal phone. So as well as a separate email, so that way, if there's questions they would have. They could bring it to me and I could bring it to the table. That way, there's a line, but. Other than that, I was trying to get insight on. Other ways to communicate with them, that way. I can bring things to the table as well as being a positive voice for them.
So it's not the project, um. What I'm trying to say. The property managers, they're not in the loop with with the concerns of the, of the people?
But with me being a, I'm gonna just say from my instinct, no.
Okay.
And that's my just view of it. I mean, because if, if there's going to be. A line of communication, I should, I don't want to have to have a third person speak for me. If I'm going to communicate with them and they, for instance, some residents are not going to be comfortable speaking with other people. As well as they're not going to be always comfortable speaking with me, but I don't want them to feel like they have to hold back on questions. And things due to the fact of they're offended by certain things that would be said.
Comments, I mean, so.
Well, I I guess what I want to understand what you're saying is that you want, since you're the resident representative. You're their, you're their quote unquote voice that you've got a phone number now and a email. And you want to be able to distribute that to the residents so they can know they can call you if they have an issue or concern.
Right.
And then you would bring that issue or concern, I guess, to the board or to the director and try to resolve it. I I think that, I think that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
I want to just say this publicly, want to apologize for you getting called like you got called, that kind of. That was so out of order for somebody to give you a number up and things of that nature. Uh still don't know where it came from.
Well, once I did my little research on it, um I guess you can call downtown and get any of our numbers. So that's why I picked it up from, so I fixed that, but I haven't called downtown.
Yeah.
And changed my number for that, because I have a, like I say, I got a per- separate phone.
Okay. I just, you know, I know that disturbed you, but you're right, we are all public, um. You know, I, that phone number down there.
Right.
But I appreciate you taking the initiative to do what you've done and uh we will support however you want to roll with that far.
Is there any like, I get, I got this and I went through this and done all of that, but is there like. As y'all say, a workshop or a training so that way I could get a better, bring better insight to the table of different things to ask about?
Some of the training we need to do, because you know what, as we keep going and issues come up. Yeah, workshop, things we need to talk about. Sometimes things have not been an issue before or a challenge and when it come up, guess what? That's what we need to do, put something in place to to address it, so thank you for taking initiative and bringing it to the table, because it's something that need to be. And and people need to know who they can go to.
Right.
You know, without always having to go here and there, but somebody they can relate to.
This is their neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, and they'll be more comfortable with, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be clear though, just for for public sake, they can, anybody can come to any of us. That's why all of our numbers are 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 made.
Right, that's, yeah, so once I did my little research, I was like, okay, I'm gonna just fix that on my end, so separate my personal.
And that makes perfect sense and I echo Chairman's uh. Words. Tiffany, is this something that the near, uh the upcoming Nero com- uh conference would it, would would address in any way?
Um to be honest with you, I really don't think so, um just because it's not the. Um you know, normal practice for residents to just to go strictly straight to commissioners. So I mean, that's not the norm of the housing authority world, but however, if you all choose to do it that way. We'll be more than happy to allow them to call you first and I don't think, I don't think that would be what you would want, but.
I don't know if it's calling them first, just the opportunity to call, I think.
I mean, with that, I was just saying, like, to give them a chance.
That would be, I mean, I would be more than happy to put a number out there and have them call that number.
I'm good.
I don't know.
Right.
No, I I I I do think that in the upcoming policy and procedure uh workshop. That 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 needs to be set and I just want to say that publicly again. Um but we we do need to put forth a a policy, they kind of draws a roadmap so that. We are driving, driving everybody to.
Protocol.
Right places.
The right places at the right time and I think. Just i- in reviewing your email, it was definitely a situation where they felt unheard by the proper channels. And so they needed, they they needed an extra proper channel uh that was outside the system to to give. Extra perspective, uh and so.
All or any organization we've ever been involved in, there's the channels, but sometimes people either are not comfortable in those channels. Don't get the answer they want, whether it's right or wrong, and always seek out somebody else. I think it was the same thing, you know, as an alderman, same thing as you, director, you have other people that work in those areas, but when somebody feels that they haven't been heard. They always say, I want, well, I want to talk to the supervisor, I want to talk to somebody above that, you know? It 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 does happen, so I just think that all channels, you know, I think all of us have an open door policy in that. Anybody who wants to be heard, we're glad to listen to them, but you'd always say, have you talked to the director first?
That first line where it should have gone.
Correct, chain of command, absolutely.
Hey, hey, last question, Tiffany, it's probably not the last question, that was a, that was a preacher's life. When we got the iPads, do, didn't, didn't they come with official uh Housing Authority emails?
They did, uh huh.
So I I mean, it might just be worthwhile for uh for the staff to. To just give those credentials to us and 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 let's make those public so that uh so that we don't have. You know, you know, folks having to get second phones and second email accounts and that kind of stuff. Um, thank you, I appreciate that.
It's good. Anyone else comment? Or hearts and minds?
We can put those email addresses on the website under your names and so that way.
That'd be great.
We could update it because we still have all commissioners' information up there.
Yeah, that'd be great and also update the um, yeah, commission, new commissioners. You know, so just ma- make it more, get it current, um.
Yeah, you said you had a headshot?
I want, nobody's asked me for my information, my bio or anything.
Maybe if if we can get that going sooner rather than later.
But if anybody would reach out, I'm happy to provide that.
Too easy.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to? To adjourn?
So move Chairman.
Second, all in favor of adjournings, say, say in five steps, saying aye.
Aye.
All of those. Being adjourned.
Thank you very much for having us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh you know what, but that because I had an, that's a prayer for you, specifically for me, yeah, because. The revenue, the revenue you're battling.
I know.